I'm in a call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on April 26, 2018. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second. It's been moving second to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, we have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda, and we do have one person to sign up, Troy Kirby.
Guys. Hi. My name is Troy Kirby. Now, I know I have two extra guests here, but I figured that they'd want to come up because mascots don't speak. I'm a Lacey resident and I represent the Lacey Pocket Gophers, where an exciting brand of semi-pro adult men's soccer. We're full of college kids. And, you know, our first home match is May the 5th, and we wanted to commemorate that by coming here and talking to you. It's at North Thurston High School, South Sound Stadium, and it's against Federal Way. Now, during our five home matches this season, which is our inaugural year, we'll be bringing teams from out the, throughout the Puget Sound area, which means local tourism, local dollars coming into this area instead of leaving from sports tourism. And we thought it'd be great to kind of help both restaurants, lodging, and other businesses kind of thrive in this area. Our ownership group is made up of Timberline, River Ridge, and Capital grads. One of our best sponsors is Mike Stedman. We want to put a shout out to him because he essentially bought our uniforms, so he basically paid for the shirts on our backs. Our, we do hire kids from River Ridge, Capital, North Thurston, Timberline, and Olympia to help with both game management, sports marketing. It is a great way for them to see new opportunities that are out there. It's a little different, but it helps on a resume, especially when you're a kid looking for that first or second job. Some of our gophers might know those kids. Right now, you know, we have a Name Our Gophers contest going on, and, you know, some of the favorite ones that we have for our fuzzy pals are Digger, Scooter, and Nutmeg. And then, of course, we have an interesting kind of, I think, sub-social media campaign. A lot of people seem to be nominating Lenny. And so, you know, we will kind of, you know, wonder what those are and trace those emails. We decided to adopt the Pocket Gopher as a mascot because we figured if we have to live with them, we might as well, you know, make them indentured servitude for us. I don't know. But we decided to have fun with it. I think, you know, during May the 5th, we are gonna have a lot of fun. Now, we're giving away water bottles to the first 500 kids to commemorate. It all says it's our inaugural match, and we wanted to actually donate one of these water bottles, as well as a scarf, to the city for their new museum, just to make sure that it's in the archives. Because there are very few things that actually say Lacey in terms of sports. I mean, we got Lacey Elementary, and now that's just a plaque. We might as well have something that says specifically Lacey. So, we wanted to give this to the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And, you know, our goal is to enhance sports tourism. Thank you. Our goal is to enhance sports tourism. It's to create that family-friendly environment. There's really not that much to do outside in a sports kind of setting in during spring and summer, so if we can bring that out, if you come out, you'll have EPA nachos, you'll have the ability to play gopher bingo. We even have a few other things, like, you know, basic kids contests and e-game trailers. We have it all for people to do. We're even working on a, you know, a double-barrel t-shirt Gatling gun that fires 60 t-shirts in five seconds 120 feet, you know? You can stay for the injuries and the liability. But one of our big points is we wanted to mention, we could have named this Olympia. A lot of people criticized us for not naming it Olympia or saying Olympia Lacey, because everyone has that mentality. We always live in the shadow of Olympia. And our big thing was, hey, this is Lacey, we're playing in Lacey, we want to be part of Lacey, and that's that civic pride. So, we just wanted to say thank you, and that's why we came to the Lacey City Council first. We didn't go to any other city council to announce. We came here first for a reason. So, thank you very much, and we just wanted to make sure you all knew what we were doing.
Right.
May the 5th.
That's great. Thank you, guys.
So, which one is Lenny? They haven't been decided yet. June 30.
Get your votes in now.
So, next up on our agenda is a proclamation for Bike Month. Carolyn?
City of Lacey proclamation. Whereas transportation accounts for nearly a third of energy use in Washington State, while nearly half of our carbon emissions originate from fossil fuel consumption, and...
Whereas bicycling is one of the most energy-efficient and non-polluting forms of transportation available, and is a mode of transportation well-suited to urban environments where trips are short in length and overly congested roads are difficult and costly to expand, and...
Whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, parking problems, and traffic congestion, and...
Whereas bicycle commuting makes people healthier and more productive through exercise, and...
Whereas inner-city transit with many sponsors, including the Capital Bicycling Club and local and regional businesses, will host the 31st Annual Bicycle Commuter Challenge during the month of May 2018, and...
Whereas the City of Lacey, in partnership with WSDOT, Thurston County, and City of Olympia, completed the major Bridging the Gap project with bridges for the Chehalis Western Trail across to Interstate 5, Martin Way, and Pacific Avenue. And whereas the City of Lacey encourages and supports pedestrian and bicycle facilities through our development standards.
Now, therefore, in recognition of the 61st National Bike Month, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim May 2018 as Bicycle Commuter Month in the City of Lacey. And I encourage all citizens to consider using active transportation modes when possible. And it looks like the person who's supposed to come and accept this proclamation is out on his bike and not here, so we'll make sure it gets to him as soon as possible. So, next up on our agenda is ordinances, the bar annexation. Rick?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Yes, next on your docket is a ordinance to, for the bar annexation, and the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance to approve this annexation. And this particular annexation area is, as shown on the screen, is roughly nine and a half acres in size. It's located on the just south frontage of 32nd Avenue in our northeast Lacey area. If you recall, the action that the council just recently took on the Gateway Division 2 annexation area, that property is just to the south of this particular location. The bar annexation is, again, as I said, nine and a half acres. It's roughly 890,000 square feet assessed valuation. It is zoned moderate density, eight units to 16 units per acre, and currently has a 12-inch water main that directly fronts the property on 36th Avenue, as well as a 8-inch sewer main. So, water and sewer utilities are directly available. The particular area is with, currently within Fire District 8, but as accordance to annexation laws, once we annex it, that property will automatically go into Fire District 3, and both Fire Districts are aware and are supportive of the annexation proposal. The council originally reviewed the petition. It was a landowner-initiated petition. The reason for their petition was so that they could develop within the City of Lacey. This is one of the circumstances where, with our recent Conferency Plan adoption, I mentioned that we had designated this area as moderate density, eight units, with a minimum density of eight units and a maximum density of 16. The current county designation is moderate density, a minimum of six and a maximum of 12 units per acre. So, the proprietors would like to take advantage of our recently adopted comp plan designation and realize a higher density of development on the property. So, as the city received that petition, the City Council Utilities Committee reviewed it, recommended to move it forward to the full City Council. The City Council reviewed the request at a public hearing, took public comment, and then took action to move the petition forward and file it with the Banner Review Board. Being that the property is less than 10 acres and less than $2.5 million in assessed valuation, is considered potentially exempt from Banner Review Board review. The Banner Review Board just recently completed the review and agreed that this is exempt from the review and did not invoke jurisdiction. And we just received that notice at the end of last month, March 27th. So, with that action, we now bring in the official ordinance back for, to the council for adoption, and with that, staff recommends approval of the ordinance in your packets to approve the bar annexation.
I move... Well, go ahead.
Available for any questions if you have some.
Okay. I move that we approve the ordinance to the Bar Annexation Project Number 17-330.
Second.
It's been moving second to adopt this ordinance to approve the bar annexation. Is there any discussion?
Just something real quick, Mayor. I just wanted to bring attention that the property owners ask to be annexed, which is very important by 60 percent. And, you know, it's great when people want to be a part of Lacey.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, one item before you is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee amendments. The reason this is going before you, we had two applicants that modified their original proposal. I think everyone knows that the Mushroom Festival is no longer going to continue in its past state, and so they had asked if they could at least have some or partial amount of the money, even though they were not going to do the full Mushroom Festival that they had done for 10 years. We also had another applicant, and that was the Lacey South Sound Chamber. They have an event called Lacey Days, and given the fact that the Jazz Festival is no longer continuing, which was an anchor event, they wanted to modify their scope. From an administrative standpoint, we felt appropriate to take this action to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and then also to City Council, because it's a change in the original scope of requests for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and then subsequently approved by the City Council. So, the two amendments, a little bit more detail, the Mushroom Festival originally was allocated $20,000. Since they're not doing the entire event, they did want to hold on to the fund run, and so they'd asked for $5,000 to continue that piece of it. The Lacey South Sound Chamber is not asking for a modification in the amount of funds, but because they're asking for a change in scope or activity, and really distinction is there, instead of focusing on two weeks of the year, they want to actually focus on all the events that occur in Lacey as a calendar year. It could be new branding, new logo, and again, because that's a new scope or change in activity, it was appropriate that was reviewed by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee held their meeting on April 18th. They reviewed those amendments and approved those and recommended full approval to the entire City Council. Also defer to the Chair, Councilmember Hearn, if he wants to add anything to this subject.
Generally speaking, I'd just like to offer appreciation and kudos to the community partners that did arrive. Of course, the Lacey Rotary returned money to the fund, which is, you know, a responsible thing to do, and it really sets a good, continues to set a good tone for the LTAC process, and also gives the hoteliers confidence that their monies are being spent productively, honestly, and efficiently in the community. And then also, kudos to the Lacey South Sound Chamber, who has taken a leadership role to extend the promotion of our, some of our fantastic community events, and did not ask for an increase in that budget, but just wanted to state, basically demonstrate their leadership, and we have some really good things to look forward to from the Lacey Chamber regarding the events that they're now promoting.
So, did the Lacey Chamber explain which events they're going to be promoting, and are they gonna come up with a new logo or something, or what will they be focusing on now that? Because a couple of these events that they were promoting in the past have gone away, so are they gonna be replacing that with, are they gonna try to find a new event, or how's that gonna work?
The details are pending, but the overview is that Lacey Days, of course, would be, like Scott said, extended into a kind of an annual event, which, you know, that's great, you know? Lacey Days is every day, right? So, I think, I would imagine they're gonna add to, refine, you know, coordinate the campaign into, with more synergy, and do some great things. But as far as the specific details, it was not a detailed plan.
Okay. I would just, one other item. So, I handed out a revised budget, so this will impact the Lodging Tax Fund, actually to the positive, it'll be reduced by $15,000. So, originally, the Lodging Tax Fund was approved for $513,500. Given the proposed amendments, the allocation to be spent or approved would be $498,500. The excess money, if you look at it from that standpoint, will just go back in the Lodging Tax Fund, and that will be reallocated for a 2019 distribution.
If I may? Thank you. Also, I think it was a good move on LTAC's part, the committee, to refrain from jumping into a mid-year allocation. Number one, even though there's some parties that thought they could probably use some of those mid-year funds, at the end of the day, most parties are very busy operating or, you know, exercising their funds this year and wouldn't have time to reconvene for another application, and so they'll have more time to prepare for next year, and we have some, we have good financing, so next year will be another good LTAC year, fully prepared.
Carol?
I noticed on here that there's $40,000 earmarked for the Jazz Festival, which has also been canceled. Will this also roll over? This is a pretty good sum of money.
It was discussed, and because that event is gonna go away, that money would just go into the fund at the year-end, so there'll be an additional $40,000 that would be redistributed if the LTAC finds an appropriate tourism event for that.
That...
That event's gonna happen next year, though, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
They are gonna try to bring back it next year?
No, I guess, since this was allocated for the Dixieland Jazz Festival, I think council knows that event is not gonna happen this year.
Well, it'll happen next year.
There's no future plans that I'm aware of to replace that event. There is a...
About next year?
Right. There's a small event called a Jazz Party, which is a completely separate group that they may ask for funds that the Jazz Festival used to give, but that's a future discussion.
Yeah, the word is that jazz is still alive in Lacey, but there's nothing, other than the group that Scott mentioned, super organized right now, but, you know, that's half a year away, so we'll see.
I just want to touch base on the Lacey South Sound Chamber. I'm on the board, of course, most, everybody knows that. So, we're gonna be voting on these monies going to, not monies changing, but the same monies going to the chamber, should I abstain from the vote? And then, I also wanted to reaffirm what Councilmember Hearn said. It isn't necessarily the direction of the board for a year-long celebration, but they wanted to enhance it longer than two weeks, and because Lacey's worthy of it at least most of the year to be celebrated.
Can we discuss that after?
Well, is he gonna abstain on this or vote, or not?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I'm, sorry, misunderstood.
So, the Lacey South Sound Chamber is gonna get the same amount as, that they, that amount of money that's not changing, but I'm on the board, and I'm feeling that I shouldn't vote on this, being as I'm a board member on the Lacey South Sound Chamber, and they're getting monetary funds.
It's already been voted on.
It probably's...
I wouldn't see it falling back.
It's already been allocated. This is just a sort of a name change.
I just wanted to make sure transparency and...
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that. Although, it's brought up here pretty, it's a good point from Carolyn, that this, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee amended budget still shows $40,000 going towards the Jazz Festival.
Right.
So, shouldn't have that been zeroed out, go from 40 to zero?
So, we talked about it. It's, I guess, from a simple accounting standpoint, the money would not be basically expended, because what, this is a reimbursement-type budget, so therefore, it didn't make sense to make an amendment to it. We could have. I guess it's a flip of the coin if we needed to do that. But at the end result, the $40,000 would go back into the Lodging Tax Fund, because no one's gonna be requesting reimbursement for it.
Because the history is, it is allocated to them.
It's allocated to them.
And then, because it's like a debited, at the end of the year, when it's not used, then it'll be reallocated naturally.
Go back. Okay. Go ahead.
That would be true then of any of these funds that aren't used. They'd all roll back in.
True.
So, we're being asked for money for all these other things, like the emergency sheltering and all. Could this money be used for any other purpose but this? Okay.
Tourists.
So, I think we are all on the same page now. It's been moved and second to, I thi, wait a minute, has there been a motion?
No.
I don't think they're asked. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the revised budget.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and second to affirm the amendments to the Lodging Tax Fund with the new numbers as presented. Is there any discussion?
The LTAC committee fully agrees in this budget.
And thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it. It's been moved and second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It's been reallocated.
Sure, thanks. So, given the timeliness of it, just another reminder, and also for the 50,000 people that may be watching tonight, that the...
Well, more than that.
The Toast of Veterans event is this Saturday, 6:30 to 8 o'clock, $50, which is a small opportunity to help our local veterans. It's at the Lacey Community Center. Tickets are still available. You can go toward the Lacey website, it's right on the front page, so encourage anyone who'd like to have a quick night out on a Saturday and toast veterans, gonna be a nice event. I think we're expecting at this point about 100 people, so there's still tickets available, so I wanted to make that announcement. Also, we did have a nice event today. We had Bring Your Daughter or Son to Work today. We have a new executive team member, Charlotte Wach. I'd like to just give her a recognition, so it was nice to actually have employees bring their sons and daughters and actually just show what, you know, we do in the City of Lacey. So, nice, nice opportunity for HR to highlight that. Thanks.
Thank you. So, next up is our standing general committees, the Utilities Committee. Councilmember Young?
Hi. Well, the Utilities Committee met on April 9th, and the first thing that we discussed was, if approved, we'll be entering into a new emergency water supply agreement with the City of Olympia. And this wouldn't be something that we're, like, we wouldn't be getting the water all the time, but only as needed. And if we do have to use their water, the minimum period would be one week, and we will be hopefully talking about this at full council, and if approved, the City Manager will sign the water supply agreement. And then, we also discussed the ordinance for the alternate day irrigation enforcement and an increase of certain utility fees, which we've talked about at a work session But they're hoping to increase the percentage of people who actively choose to follow the current policy from 22% to 34% by implementing enhanced enforcement. And if they're able to achieve that goal, it would result in reducing peak day demand by half a million gallons per day. So...
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So, we're trying to increase it from 22 to 34%, so are we saying 78% of people are not following the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Wow.
No. No.
Okay. Can you clarify that?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I will get that and come back to you. But no, we don't have 70% non-compliance right now.
So, yeah.
But hear that.
Okay.
Okay. And then, the city is proposing to increase fees, just regular utility fees, to meet what the comparable cities are charging right now. Then we had a presentation on the wastewater odor and corrosion control program. So, the sewer system has had experienced high levels of hydrogen sulfide, which causes foul odors and corrosion, but we started using a product called Bioxide. It's a biochemical product, and it helps to eliminate the odor, prevent corrosion, and reduce safety concerns. The city staff currently monitor hydrogen sulfide at 84 sites, and in 2017, we spent $210,000 to treat hydrogen sulfide in the sewer system. That's my report.
Thank you. I had a question. I guess we'll talk about this more when the emergency water supply agreement comes before this council. I was just curious, when's the last time we used that, the water tie, the tie-in, and is there some, be some cost involved to make sure that tie-ins working and flushing properly and all that stuff?
So, the agreement is really to, for us to access a million gallons if needed, so it's really just, I'd call the neighbor-to-neighbor policy. The previous one that we had was set up because we were getting very close to our water rights allocation, and so we were actually using that on a continual basis. So, this is going to be a situation where we pay for a month only. The other one was if we used it, we, it was almost incentive to use the entire amount of water, otherwise we'd be overly charged. Was it 2015 is when we stopped using the Olympia?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, is that currently a tie-in that we just have turned off?
We have to do, we will use the same inner tie, we have to make some modifications, but yeah, there's not a lot of work involved there.
Okay. I was just curious, I'm sure that's gonna be in front of us again.
To follow on Councilmember Greenstein's question, I believe that's an interpretation you can make from the minutes.
Yes.
Because it does say we have 22% compliance. I think what the interpretation would be is that 78% don't comply with it 100% of the time. So, it's not just 78% blanket or not participating, they're just not getting 100% every day when their schedule is. So, what they're trying to do is boost that number up to get 100% compliance from 22 to 34%. But in general, people are following it, just not every other day that they should, if that helps.
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, well, I mean, when I saw that number, I'm like, we need to do something, because that would be really pretty poor compliance.
But it is clearly effective, because it has reduced our overall water demand from that standpoint, so I think you can argue it's a success.
Great.
We just want to basically continue and build on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Successful 22% of the time.
We save, we save a half million gallons, I think, is the number to focus on.
If I, if I may?
Yeah.
So, I'm on the committee racial deferred, I could say a few things, but a lot of it has to do with, I guess, enforcement. It's, it's hard to enforce when people are watering and when they're not. So, part of the logistics here on this policy was, it would help community enforcement.
And they may not know about the policy or pay attention to notifications about the policy, so it may not be that they're intentionally ignoring it, you know?
Good. Thank you. So, next up is Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. I'm up first, and I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
So, I already reported on my three committees last time, but I have just one small thing to add about Joint Animal Services Commission. They had an exit audit on April 12th, and they received a clean audit. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Young?
Hi. So, I do have a couple of reports on the EDC board meeting. We just had the gala last Friday, the EDC Gala. It was a phenomenal event, very successful. They have the Inspire Conference. This is a, put on by the Washington Center for Women in Business, and that's coming up Wednesday, May 2nd. They will have speakers from all over the state, some local speakers. They're looking for sponsors, they wanted me to emphasize that, and it will be held at the EDC from 8 to 3. And then, last time I reported on Opportunity Zones. So, we did find out that the Woodland Square District and the Census Tract for Downtown Olympia are definitely approved, and then I believe that the Nisqually Tribe Census Tract was approved, and the Chehalis Tribe Census Tract. And then, members of the board of the EDC, as well as some other members in the community, like Cheryl Selby and a few others, they went to China to meet with some business people there, and it was a very successful trip. They do have what they called some formal relationships, and they're trying to get people to invest in Thurston County. So, it sounded very promising, and I'm sure there'll be more to come. I believe some of these people from China will be coming in May, so here pretty soon we'll actually have some visitors. So, that's my EDC report. And then, Thurston Thrives met, and we discussed the Action Team Summit that was held on March 22nd, basically just going over the notes of that summit, which I believe Cynthia reported on, and really wanting to start strategizing the goals of Thurston Thrives, which is exciting. I think it would be great to prioritize and set some very clear goals in that group. And that's, yeah, that's basically it. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, just a really quick... Yeah, just a really quick report today, the Thurston 911 Non-Member Fee Committee met actually this morning, the, the goal of the committee is to make the fees to the non-members who use 911 services more fair, right now, there's some inconsistency and what some would consider probably unfair in the way that different entities are paying, some are paying more than they should, some are paying less than they should, so we're working on that, today's meeting was really just to kind of get to what information we need to make the decisions, so we have another meeting scheduled for the middle of May, we hope to actually finish this at that meeting, so.
Can you give example of the non-members who are using the system?
Yeah, so, there's, there's quite a few, non-members would be our Public Works Department, as an example, uses them for some dispatch, as do the, our neighboring communities use them for their dispatch, tow trucks, so when there's an accident and the police call for a tow truck, that's dispatched by 911 service, so that's some of those users, animal services, there's quite a few actually.
Okay.
And right now, the way they're paying is all over the place, so, we're working on cleaning that up, and we should get that done at the next meeting, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem. And then the second one, to be honest, I'm not sure if I'm even supposed to report on this committee, but the left one disability board met, the things that we discuss at that meeting are typically covered, secured by HIPAA, so can't really talk about what happens at the meeting, but I will say that we did have our first meeting of this year, I was elected Chair of that committee, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
I voted for Lenny.
He actually nominated me, so thank you. And that is my report.
Yeah, that, that, did it perfectly, Councilmember Hearn.
So we thoroughly exhausted the LTAC meeting, that was my report. Lots going on with the Olympia and beyond, nominations are open for the two thousand eighteen sports awards, they're promoting Lacy Spring Fun Fair, twentieth annual slurp, Swan Lake, experience, let's see, they're going to have the inaugural sports awards banquet coming up on June nineteenth, and much, much more, this Olympia and beyond doing a lot of stuff. My last report is one final push for the Race Against Trafficking 5K this Saturday, April twenty-eighth, and I've asked and prepared if we could watch that promo one more time, and encourage you to, to, it's a race walk, so if you, you don't feel like you have your, your legs ready to roll on a run, take a stroll and support the cause, thank you.
Great. I have a question, is this going to be annual event?
It's the third annual.
Yeah, so they plan on having it every year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess-
Until, until trafficking is stopped.
Yeah, which is probably every year, all right, thank you, I missed that third annual.
No problem.
Deputy Mayor?
Mountain View Church, where is that located?
It's on Israel Road, which is the road that City Hall is on.
Yes.
And you can see that church from the freeway as you're leaving the area.
Oh, okay.
On water.
Thank you.
It's right by the high school.
Oh.
Across the street from the high school.
So next up is Councilmember Stedman.
I have no report, Mayor, but I was present at the Community Action Council meeting that Carolyn's going to give a report on.
Okay, then I'll go to Councilmember Cox.
All righty, I have reports on the Inter-City Transit Authority meeting and the Community Action Council, I'll start with Inter-City Transit, was really proud, the Executive Director of the Washington State and Transit Insurance Pool was at the meeting to recognize one of the city bus drivers, and his, his name is David Cave, and David was just going along on his route when he got a radio message that a person with dementia had wandered from her residence, and they were asking the bus drivers to be on the lookout, and sure enough, he spotted her and safely got her on the bus and made sure that she got safely home. So he won the Above and Beyond Award from this statewide agency, which I thought was pretty, pretty nice, and speaks very highly of our transit drivers. There's two public hearings coming up for Inter-City Transit, the first will be on May sixteenth at five thirty PM, and this will be on the Transportation Improvement Program Funds, the maximum available for these funds would be seventy point nine million dollars, and this is a mix of federal and local funds. There's a second public hearing is coming up at five thirty PM on May twenty-third, and this will be on the short-term transportation improvements that were outlined, which includes extending service to Northeast Lacy and express service to Tacoma. Part of the deal on this is that dial-a-lift service area will see a gain of about a square mile, and that would benefit mainly the Meridian Campus, housing about eleven hundred homes in that area, unfortunately, will not go as far north as Jubilee yet, but it's, it's some progress, and on the express service, there's going to be some trade-offs, if this thing goes as approved, we're going to see at peak commuter rush times, service is frequent as every fifteen minutes, it'll slow down during the off-hours, but we're, we had that service coming out of the Lacy Transit Sitter in the past, and at the Hoagum Bay Park and Ride, those are going to be bypassed, so to take advantage of this new and improved service, you'll have to get yourself to the Olympia Transit Sitter and board a bus there to get on the, the fast track to Tacoma. So, again, if, if you've got problems with that, the public hearing on May twenty-third is the time to speak out.
Yeah.
And they're, currently, this week, they started doing public outreach on that, and working toward final adoption by the Transit Authority Board on July eighteenth, and service changes would be effective on September twenty-third if all goes forward as envisioned currently.
So do they, sorry, do they have, are they going to have this as part of their budget, different bus stops out there, and where are they going to decide exactly where the bus stops are going to go?
I think they're still working on that, and I've just heard little rumblings that some, some of it may be a little problematic, like, they were hoping, the Community Action Council was hoping to get a stop right near there, but it's-
I hope so, yeah.
I think they can get close, but I'm just not quite sure what the problems are with engineering that.
Okay.
If, if any.
It makes sense if there's a stop right there, right? Because there's, I'm sure a lot of people will need to use, get there.
Well, yeah, and then there's all those employers who-
Rick?
Who-
At, at a staff level, we have been coordinating with this potential route extension and some alternative routes, which the one they've settled on, and then we've also taken a, a drive of that route, and they are looking at potential bus stop locations, the, there will be a bus stop at the, close to the intersection of Alamont Orion, which is where the Community Action Council is located, that area, because that is going to be a higher user and a needed user, they're also looking at when they come down Alamont, key stops along Alamont, serve the employment area, ACS Xerox, Shipwreck Beads, those locations, they'll probably have a stop in that vicinity, right next to the Port of Olympia property that we're partnering with the port on, and then as they go through to Marvin Road, they'll go, they'll go past Marvin Road and turn and do a loop on, I think it's Twin Oaks Drive that cuts up the Hickory Stick, to make a stop by Providence Medical Center, because that's another potential high, and you, so they are working on those stops and getting them located and trying to concentrate them in the best locations.
Great, thanks.
Thank you for elaborating on that.
Yeah, Carolyn? I would like to see, you know, if there, if there's an answer of what the financial impact would be to extend the park and ride to Jubilee, I, you know, I know that's-
Park and Ride?
Not park and ride, just-
I mean, the- The transit area, yeah.
The bus or the dial-a-
The dial lift, yeah, I just, I said park and ride. Yeah. Yeah, I meant dial lift, you know, I know it's substantial, I'm sure, but that's, you know, one of the places really, really needed, and I, I'd be interested to see what that financial impact would be, and see if, you know, there couldn't be a campaign to pick that up, but I, I won't be at the public meeting because I'm covering for you at the Community Action Council meeting, so I won't be able to voice my concern there, so, but, you know, the, the retirement community at Jubilee, they, you know, these citizens are role models that worked forty years of their lives, you know, put money in the right direction into all these programs that we run, and it'd be really nice to get them serviced out there, I know you're working as hard as you can, you've made leaps and bounds, and I salute you for that, I really do, but that, that just makes sense, maybe if it wasn't as big a financial impact, maybe we could find a way to fund it, I don't know.
Well, thank you for that, Mike, and I, I will say, if you can't make it to the public hearing, they will accept written testimony, so I would encourage you and anybody else, if you're listening at Jubilee, to, to send letters, and I can ask if they've penciled it out to see what it would be, but there, there are parameters for the dial-a-lift.
And I know you said you, they're extending it a half a mile or so, and I think it'd probably be another half a mile or a quarter of a mile, but, I mean, I know it's substantial, because even one pickup, I believe, is seventy-five dollars, just for picking one person up, but-
They're accepting comment letters though, correct?
Yes, yes.
There you go.
And I believe it's three quarters of a mile outside the, you know, from the stops, it would be three, and it's just, just a little shy of Jubilee, so, anyway, we've got progress in the right direction, it's just going to take time, and I mean, as the Director was very careful to point out, that the, these service changes are zeroed out, I mean, keeping costs the same, because these are really turbulent times for federal transportation funds, I'm sure you're aware that the federal government is talking about reversing the eighty-twenty ratio to make local responsibility eighty percent, and-
And I'm not at the discussion or the, you know, negotiating or, or at the board meetings and, and listening to all the info and stuff, but, I mean, maybe something like, instead of every fifteen minutes during peak hours, you want twenty minutes on these routes, and, but I know routes and the dial lift are completely separate, but you can't have dial lift without having the route service area.
Right.
So, I don't know, just, you, you've moved mountains, and we appreciate it in Northeast Lacy, really do.
Well, one other thing to know about dial lift that I just recently found out is, you know, this is supposed to be for disabled people, it's, it's a para-transit service, and you actually have to have a doctor's note, so it's, it's not just like, hey, little bus, I need a ride into town, it, it's, it's a process, you have to reserve over, you know, at least twenty-four hours ahead, and so it takes some doing, I'm not sure there's full understanding of that out there, but we'll keep working, and one thing that I'm wanting to explore is Jubilee has two village vans that were provided by Inter-City Transit, and whether there might be some way to connect the village vans with a stopping point, I'm not sure, but it, it might be worth looking into.
I know they have plenty of volunteers, that's one community that has, is not short in, when it comes to volunteers. Councilmember?
That's a good point about the village vans, those are connected with IT though, right?
Yes, IT provides them and services them, I just, you know, I think there may be some insurance considerations about transporting a, a disabled person, but, you know, worth exploring.
I think it's excellent, excellent point, that the village vans are probably a perfect match for a community like that.
You don't know until you have the discussion, right?
Exactly, so, we're going to keep pressing for more and more, but happy that we're getting at least a foothold into Northeast Lacy.
Again, thank you for fighting for Northeast Lacy.
Absolutely. So on to Inter-City Transit, we had a pretty, I mean, a Citizens Committee Action Council met last evening, and it was a pretty short meeting, we received an informal report on the successful fundraising breakfast they had last week for the Monarch Children's Justice and Advocacy Center, there's some good news, they're receiving another hundred and thirty-three thousand from the Matchmaker Weatherization Program, which will allow them to help more clients weatherproof their homes. They're going through the money for the housing and essential needs contracts in Thurston and Mason County, a lot faster than they projected, so they've approached both counties to supplement or add to the contracts, and it looks like that's going to happen. And of note, they're installing a video surveill- surveillance system at the Thurston County CAC building, because there's been a series of break-ins and theft of equipment and fuel, I mean, literally taking fuel out of vehicles in the parking lot there, so this system's going to provide perimeter alarms that'll send video to staff, so they can see what's happening and contact police, and there was some discussion last night that, hoping that Lacy Police are going to be having a little substation there in the Monarch Facility, and that may be a very prominent sign that says, Lacy Police will discourage future thefts, so, we'll see about that. And just one more quick thing, they're, they're working with our staff, and I'm sure Rick probably knows about this, to explore the feasibility of building a commodities warehouse at the Holme Cove Apartment Complex on Thirty-second Avenue, and this would replace the current storage facility they have in Shelton, which they're getting great pressure to sell, so that looks like it's going to be a conversation anyway, that's my report.
Great, thank you, before we adjourn to an executive work session, I just want to thank our Chair of Replying Commissions here, Paul Enns, thank you for being here tonight, we will be adjourning to an executive work session for the City Manager's Performance Evaluation. What were you adjourning from? Okay, go ahead.
Just wanted to make a quick statement, for those who don't know, our own former Mayor Virgil Clarkson-
Yes.
And his wife Barbara Clarkson will be receiving honorary degrees from St. Martin's University at their May twelfth graduation, because of all the civic work they've done in this community, so just wanted to make the public aware.
That's, thank you for that, that's very, very well deserved, I think we'll do twenty minutes.
He was also at the Community Action Council meeting with me and Carolyn yesterday also.
Yeah, so, we will be adjourning for twenty minutes to our executive session, if it takes more time, that, I'll come back out, but we'll say originally twenty, twenty minutes, so you keep it classy, Lacy, and we'll, we can be adjourning to the City Manager Evaluation.